And the other item, as I've mentioned to you all, Nicole, where is she?
There she is.
She was approached about property at 523 Florence Street. The owner of the property would like to donate that property to the city. There was a structure on there that we raised last year, or the year before?
Last year.
Yeah, and we have been maintaining it. At the cost of $900 is what it cost last year to maintain that property. If we, if you are willing to accept that, then at some point we can auction that off and hopefully get that back into someone's hands who will take care of it. It is a vacant lot. So if everybody, no, if you all are okay with it, we'll move forward. Then Kelly would have to prepare a deed for the mayor to sign to accept. Everybody okay with us pursuing that? Okay.
Yes.
Good. Okay. 523 Pelham, Florence Street, excuse me, I'm sorry. 523 Florence Street.
All right. Thank you. Public comment?
Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am?
I have some questions. I hope that's okay.
Would you mind to stand up and state your name?
Is this the mic?
Right here. There's three of them here.
Okay. My name's Gwendolyn Boone, and I know that we're all worked up about the budget because if we get rid of the regulatory fee, how are we going to make everything work? And I want to start by saying I'm not against the proposed raises. You know, with the cost of everything, the way that it is, I don't know how families make it. I mean, it's a struggle for everybody. So I just want to start by saying that. But I do have some questions about how this is all going to play out. Let me get to my notes. The new budget reflects an across-the-board raise for all city employees for budget year 24, 25, and 5%. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Was the raise for city employees for budget year 23, 24 also 5%?
What's the what? I'm sorry, can you?
The raise for city employees for last year was also 5%?
Yes, it was. Yes. Yes. Yeah. What?
Last year was based on the value.
Yeah, it wasn't flat. It wasn't across the board.
But we approved. We approved up to 5%.
Yes, correct.
What about for 22, 23? Is that also 5%?
Gwendolyn, I can't, I don't recall what.
It's 5, 5, 5, and 5.8.
So going about four years, that's up to 20% raises.
20.8.
What would we say over the last 10 years? Like, have we given raises every year over the last 10 years?
Not up to 5%. It varied.
We don't know that.
I don't have that off the top. No, I'd have to go back and look. I don't have that information off the top.
I know that we're trying to get to a number because you got like the report from the Council of Cities. What more is it going to take to get to that number percentage-wise? If we were up 20% over the last four years, what is it going to take?
Um, oh, yeah, sure, go ahead.
The problem is that we cannot keep employees. We're not paying enough to be competitive in the market.
Okay.
So this week, I believe, and the guys can correct me if I'm wrong, Public Works lost someone who went to Walmart. They can work inside in air conditioning. You know, the conditions are a lot easier, and they've made more money than we're paying.
I understand that, but I still think these are valid questions.
Well, I'm giving you a valid answer.
Well, the answer's not really related to my, I mean, it's related to my questions, but it's not a direct answer to my questions, which is.
Then repeat your question, please.
What is, what more, what is it, what percentage is it going to take to get to that number that Matt has in mind that's going to turn all, turn around all of our employment problems?
It varies from, it varies position to position. A vast majority, Gwendolyn, when I, when I took the League of Cities Salary Survey, we're at the 25th percentile or lower. There were some that were between 25 and 50. There were a few that were right at the 50th percentile, so it kind of varies on position.
Okay. But this year you actually argued for a 9.5% raise across.
To get, yes, to get closer completely to that, yes.
But some of those positions, then, that are already at 50, they would have been.
They would have been gone up, yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so what's the fringe rate for city employees?
You talking about benefits-wise? Um, no, the fringe benefits would include vacation, sick time.
Health insurance.
Health insurance, yes, yes.
What's the fringe rate?
The rate?
Right.
I wouldn't say I have a rate.
We don't have that rate because it depends on whether or not an individual takes single parent plus.
Okay.
Family plan.
We don't pay all of health insurance.
No.
Right, of course. I'm just thinking because in most private industries have a fringe rate of less than 25%.
I'm not, I, again, it varies.
Our comptroller should know that, wouldn't you think?
Not with health.
Like, the average, the average, what's the average fringe rate for city employees?
How about, Gwendolyn?
And half and non-half is different for retirement.
Right, right.
Gwendolyn, if you want specific questions to answer.
We'd be glad, yeah, if you would let us know. We'd be glad to get that information for you.
Just send them, and we'll be glad to get you the answers to those.
Absolutely.
Okay, what is the dollar amount for our pension liability?
The unfunded liability?
No, like, I'm concerned with the declining tax base. I mean, our people population, you know, is going down. I'm concerned that our tax base and our ability to meet our pension liability in the years to come. With every increase that we have, our liability just goes up for the future.
Oh, we would.
It's not like in the private industry, the poor old man, hey, you stop working there, they stop contributing.
Our unfunded, our unfunded retirement and insurance liability is around $30 million. If the legislature were ever to call that, they would bankrupt just about every city in the state. Because there's no way anybody would be able to pay that. You'd have to amortize that out 30 years to pay it off.
I'm concerned 20 years from now, we're still going to be paying the benefits of the people that we gave raises to today.
Right. Our retirement contribution rates, though, are decreasing.
Okay.
They plateaued about a year or two ago, and now they are starting to decline.
I think these are questions that citizens should be asking, and commissioners should be able to answer, ideally before the budget is proposed and ratified. But it's not too late to correct our actions for the future, so that we aren't saddling our future with an unsustainable budget.
Thank you. If you have any other questions, feel free to send them over to me, and I will try to get you answers.
Okay.
Appointments and reappointments. Stacy Temple to fill the unexpired term of Tyler McHugh in the accommodations category on the Maesville, Mason County CBB term to expire 10/11/25.
Make that motion, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rogue call, please.
Commissioner Bremer.
Yes.
Commissioner Cartman.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood.
Yes.
Commissioner McKay.
Yes.
Mayor Carter.
Yes, ma'am. And I have a couple of oaths of office. May I do that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I would like Erin Cowles and Don Renee Brooks to come forward, please.
And these are for the?
Codes Enforcement Board, both of them.
Okay, Renee will do yours first. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky as long as you continue a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of Codes Enforcement Board member according to law? And do you further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present Constitution, you being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within the state nor out of it, nor have you sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help you God? All right, thank you. I'll give you this to sign.
You can just sign the letter.
That's yours? Erin? Do you, Erin Cowles, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky as long as you continue a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of Codes Enforcement Board member according to law? And do you further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present Constitution, you being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within the state nor out of it, nor have you sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help you God?
Got you.
All right, thank you. Let's thank them for.
Thank you all. Sorry. Mayor Commissioners, Public Works is targeting the dates of July 20 through July 29 to set out dumpsters. Same locations as always. We'll get that advertised on the website, out on social media. We'll be taking appliances at Forest Avenue Police Station and Public Works. No tires. Does that sound good to everybody? All right?
Christmas in July.
Anne, you good with that?
I'm good with that, yes.
Okay.
Discussion, official depositories.
Currently in our ordinance, we have six institutions where we can deposit money. That is the Bank of Maesville, the Kentucky League of Cities Investments Pool, US Bank, People's Bank, People's Bank of Kentucky, and the Security Bank and Trust Company. Is there any interest of expanding that?
To where?
To any other entities. We can only invest in institutions that are located in the Commonwealth.
Count, what's your purpose for doing that, ma'am?
We had a, when we had an audit committee meeting, it was brought up to see if we had any interest in expanding our depositories. I'm not advocating for it nor against it. That's your all's call. So if there's any comments on that, you all let me know.
Our comptroller said that he had been approached by several different institutions that I think were not on the list, and I think they were providing pretty good quotes for deposits for CDs. I guess I would ask him to tell us which ones they are and whether or not he would, whether he would request they be added, so he'd have some more flexibility.
Well, so overall, I was approached by one bank that's outside of county limits here, that is not currently on the limit, on the list. And of course, we have a new bank that's getting ready to open that's not currently on the list. So the bank that is outside the county approached me. Formerly, they, one of the people that came and approached me worked through Citizens Bank, one of the Citizens Bank. But they did bring good rates. The idea of the proposal and the way they left it was, is that as a city ordinance, the city is responsible for looking at the best interest of city funds and trying to get the best rates that we can. And as the person put it, that we are to do our due diligence and make sure we can get the best rates to make that money last longer. And so whether the option is, I can't single one entity out of my mind, but either whether the option would be to open it up, my original thoughts was to open it up to the Buffalo Trace, anybody that's within the Buffalo Trace community. An option was still back on, did we open it up for anybody in local Kentucky? But either way, if there's more options and more possibilities, there might be better ways to either get some better rates on CDs and stuff.
Well, I understand the premise of that. I think something that we have to keep in mind is that when we invest our money in our local banks, that money then gets reinvested into the community through loans, et cetera, that gets paid back. I would definitely recommend, there's no reason not to utilize the new bank that's coming, but just keep in mind that money does, you know, stay in the community and, but I also understand, too, if we can get a better rate, we're doing the due diligence to our citizens as well. But that, this is your all's call. But then again, we have to, we have to specifically list the institution in our ordinance. That's why we're only having a discussion tonight.
Well, have you asked a lot of banks what their rates are compared to what Joseph has talked to, or Joseph, did you ask what their rates were?
The one bank, I mean, they're all, there's two banks that are pretty comparable and on the higher end, and there's two banks that are on the lower end locally. And the bank that approached from outside would be kind of similar to the higher-end bank. Banks.
How many employees do the banks have here? And how many branches? What are their taxes? And what are their fees for the other banks?
When you say what are their, when you say fees, I mean like.
Well, I've been here long enough to remember when government entities had to leave a bank because of the fees they were charged, the management fees, because they had so much money in there. I was also here when, or shortly after, there was a pension fund that was voted to leave a bank here and go to another bank, and lost a large percentage of its value.
I think, David, what we do, and he has a spreadsheet of all of the CDs and where they're invested, what the length is, we would evaluate, what's the interest rate versus what are the fees they're charging? And, you know, you kind of got to balance that out to determine where we want to, where we want to put our money, get the best bang for our money.
Okay, well, what about the bricks and mortar? The tax base?
I'm not following your question.
Well, what if, you're looking at a bank that has nothing here but an employee or two.
Right. No, I understand that.
And they're going to pay a rate.
No, I understand that.
But what about if there's a bank here that's?
I understand that, too.
That's got $2 million worth of taxable property here.
I understand that. I get it. Like I said, I'm not advocating one way or the other.
Okay.
I would recommend.
I'm not either.
I would recommend seeing what the new bank, First State Bank, that's going to be located out near Walmart, you know, we definitely want to talk to them when they come into town and see what they, what they have to offer.
And things with banks have changed, just with some of them. I mean, like, US used to have the downtown and a lot of employees that.
That's right.
Yeah. No, I understand what you're saying, but, again, this is just discussion. Is there any direction that you all want me to take?
The day that we met in the auditorium, I got the impression that the two banks that Joseph is talking about adding were really, really competitive. And I feel like that we probably need to add those to give him the flexibility that he needs. You know, he might find out that their fees cancel out the interest rate, the favorable interest.
Well, yeah, and the other thing is, just because we add them doesn't mean we have to invest with them, deposit money in their bank. Doesn't mean we have to.
Would that have to be brought before the board?
Yes, we would have, you all would have to amend 13201 to include any other official depositories in the ordinance. Yes, you all would have to approve that. Because they're required to be listed by name in the ordinance.
And could we not reach out to the ones we currently use?
Oh, he's.
For rates increase, I mean.
Oh, he's constantly, whenever one is close to coming due, he's shopping. He's shopping. Yeah.
Well, and if you noticed on the financial report from today, we went from about $40,000 of interest to $130,000 of interest last year. Of course, that could be because the interest rates went up. Part of that could be. But the other part is because he's been shopping around, trying to get the best deals.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think we definitely ought to modify the ordinance to include those extra two, you know? And if it doesn't work out, they're not, not good banks, then we'll remove them. You know, this is an ordinance we can always change.
Go ahead, Anne.
Have we talked about this?
Yeah. Yes, and we do, Anne. When a CD is close to coming, coming due, we, he asked, you know, are you able to, what rate are you able to provide? And if it's not suitable, and what we've done in the past is, you know, we've moved to a different bank. We try to keep our money spread out through all these institutions, but, and we use other banks as leverage. Hey, such and such is offering this, can you match it? They have, yes, in the past. Yes, ma'am.
I understand.
Yes, they do. And they reinvest our money. Got you.
Did we get rid of bank shares tax?
Yeah. I mean, we, we have a, we.
Do the bank deposit?
Yeah. It's still there. Okay. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, and we would, we would evaluate all of that, Commissioner.
Absolutely.
Well, we'll see what First State has to offer and, and the other bank that he has spoken with, and we'll come back to you. Is that good? All right? Thank you.
Motion to approve fiscal year 2023 audit.
Mayor, before there's a motion, I would like to say again that we did meet, the Audit Committee met, was it last week, early last week, with Baldwin CPAs who conducted the audit. I will tell you, it was a clean audit opinion, no significant deficiencies, and the word that they, that the CPA, the auditor can be used was consistency. We've been consistent, consistent, consistent over the years. And basically, to put it in a nutshell, for fiscal year '23, we ended up basically breaking even. We were $45,000 in the black. And I don't know if you two, you two were in it, you're the Audit Committee, if you have any comments?
I would just say that we, we met with Drew Ulmer, with Baldwin CPAs, and he had a real good handle, obviously, on our, on our books. He said that there were, he said that he used government audit standards for this as opposed to a business standard.
He used Gatsby.
Yeah.
And he said that there was no non-compliance noted. So I guess that's a double negative or triple negative, but we're, everything was clean, a clean audit, and I never get tired of saying that.
Yeah, same here.
Clean audit.
Same here.
Ma'am, I have, I have trouble reading this because of the typos in it, like 12 pages.
Yeah, we're still, we're still waiting on a.
Okay.
On a, on a clean.
Okay.
To have those taken care of. And they will, they will be sending us bound copies.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
And to address Gwendolyn's, the city's proportionate share of the net pension liability under the current discount rate is $22 million.
But that's, that's just the retirement. That doesn't include the insurance.
That's right.
When you combine them both, it's closer to 30.
27, maybe.
Yeah, 27, there you go.
Okay.
And Mayor and Commissioners, I would like.
I would just say that we, we met with Drew Ulmer with Baldwin CPAs, and he had a real good handle, obviously, on our, on our books. He said that there were, he said that he used government audit standards for this as opposed to a business standard.
He used Gatsby.
Yeah.
And he said that there was no non-compliance noted. So I guess that's a double negative or triple negative, but, but we're, everything was clean, a clean audit, and I never get tired of saying that.
Yeah, and same here.
Clean audit.
Same here.
Ma'am, I have, I have trouble reading this because of the typos in it, like 12 pages.
Yeah, we're still, we're still waiting on a...
Okay.
On a, on a clean...
Okay.
To, to have those taken care of. And they will, they will be sending us bound copies.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
And to, to address Wendellins, the, the city's proportionate share of the net pension liability under the current discount rate is $22 million.
But that's, that's just the retirement, that's, that doesn't include the insurance.
That's right.
When you combine them both, it's closer to 30.
27, maybe.
Yeah, 27, there you go.
Okay.
And, and Mayor and Commissioners, I would like to tip my cap to Joseph for somebody who came in, who is not a CPA, who did not have municipal financing experience, did a phenomenal job over this year. He will tell you, he will admit it, it was a learning curve, but in the end, he knocked it out. And I also want to say thank you to all the department heads who did a phenomenal job keeping an eye on their budget, and very proud of all of you. Thank you. So now, we just need a motion to approve fiscal year 23 audit.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer. Commissioner Cardinal.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood.
Yes.
Commissioner McKay.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Cottle.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing memorandum of agreement Kentucky Gateway Museum Center for loan of non-current ordinance and minute books 24-46.
A resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding with Kentucky Gateway Museum Center for loan of non-current city commission ordinance and minutes books, be it resolved by the city of Maysville, Kentucky, that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Kentucky Gateway Museum Center for the loan of its non-current city commission ordinance and minutes books to the museum.
So moved. Oh, sorry. Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer. Commissioner Cardinal.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood.
Yes.
Commissioner McKay.
Yes.
Mayor Cottle.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing grant application for TAP matching funds 24-47.
Resolution authorizing grant application, adoption of a resolution of the city of Maysville, here and after known as entity, authorizing the completion and filing of a government resources accelerating needed transformation grant program of 2024 project application for up to $362,000 in grant program of 2024 funds with the Cabinet for Economic Development, CED, authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Maysville to execute any documents which are deemed necessary by CED to carry out this project, and authorizing the authorized representative to act as the authorized correspondent for this project, permitting review and execution of all agreements and request of all disbursements related to the grant program of 2024, whereas the entity desires to promote and carry out community development efforts on behalf of the residents of the city of Maysville by supporting the grant program of 2024 project. And whereas the entity is submitting or has submitted an application for the following federal grant program, US Department of Transportation Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP, with the intent to access federal grant resources that are in the public interest and for a public purpose, may seek funding assistance in preparing and/or completing applications for federal resources, whereas it recognizes that the grant program of 2024 monies available to the entity for the purposes stated herein pursuant to KRS 147A.150 to 147A.166 impose certain obligations and responsibilities upon the entity and will require, among other things, one, approval of a satisfactory application submitted to CED for approval, two, proper registration to do business within the Commonwealth, and three, other obligations of the entry in connection with receiving grant program of 2024 monies for the purposes stated herein. Now therefore, be it resolved this 11th day of July 2024 by the city of Maysville City Commission, that a grant program of 2024 application on behalf of the entity for grant program of 2024 monies up to $362,000 for the Maysville TAP sidewalk walk project shall be submitted to CED. The entity shall provide such additional information and furnish such documentation as may be required, and the authorized representative shall act as the authorized correspondent for this project.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer. Commissioner Cardinal.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood.
Yes.
Commissioner McKay.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Cottle.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, real quick, if I may, now we need, so what this does is, we've received roughly $1.85 million transportation alternatives program grant to redo the sidewalks down McDonald Parkway, up Limestone, down East Second to roughly Main Street, both sides. The federal amount on that is $1,491,904. Our match currently, which is 20% of that, is $372,977. With this application, the grant acronym funding would be $362,000. Our local match would only be $10,977. So what I need from you all is a motion, is a motion to commit up to $11,000 in local matching funds to the TAP project.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please. I'm sorry, Ann, did you have a question? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer. Commissioner Cardinal.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood.
Yes.
Commissioner McKay.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Cottle.
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance repealing code of ordinance 231.14, which created an alcohol beverage regulatory fee 24-08.
An ordinance repealing code of ordinances, section 231.14, which created an alcoholic beverage regulatory fee. Summary, this ordinance repeals code of ordinances, section 231.14, which created an alcoholic beverage regulatory fee.
So moved.
Roll call.
Commissioner Brammer. Commissioner Cardinal.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood.
No.
Commissioner McKay.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Cottle.
No. Close session pursuant to KRS 61.8101F, discussion which might lead to the appointment, discipline, or dismissal of an individual employee.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer. Commissioner Cardinal.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood.
Yes.
Commissioner McKay.
Yes.
Mayor Cottle.
Yes, ma'am.